Hello and welcome back to session six of our Ephesians Bible study. Let's go ahead and open with a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for having us together digitally so that we may study your word and learn what you have to teach us about the new life we have in Christ. In his name we pray, amen. So let's go ahead and read, or we're gonna pick up in chapter four. We're gonna go through seventeen through five, or chapter five verse two. So we're gonna throw in the first two verses of chapter five in with the end of chapter four and see that all as one big section. So let's go ahead and read. Now this I say and testify in the Lord, that you must no longer walk as the Gentiles do in the futility of their minds. They are darkened in their understanding, alienated from the life of God because of the ignorance that is in them due to their hardness of heart. They have become callous and have given themselves up to sensuality, greedy to practice every kind of impurity. But that is not the way you have learned in Christ, assuming that you have heard about him and were taught in him as the truth is in Jesus, to put off your old self which belongs to your former manner of life and is corrupt through deceitful desires, and to be renewed in the spirit of your minds and to put on the new self, created after the likeness of God in true righteousness and holiness. Therefore, having put away falsehood, let each one of you speak the truth with his neighbor; for we are members one of another. Be angry and do not sin. Do not let the sun go down on your anger and give no opportunity to the devil. Let the thief no longer steal, but rather let him labor, doing honest work with his own hands, so that he may have something to share with anyone in need. Let no corrupting talk come out of your mouths, but only such as is good for building up, as fits the occasion, that it may give grace to those who hear. And do not grieve the Holy Spirit of God by whom you were sealed for the day of redemption. Let all bitterness and wrath and anger and clamor and slander be put away from you, along with all malice. Be kind to one another, tender-hearted, forgiving one another, as God in Christ forgave you. Therefore, be imitators of God as beloved children, and walk in love as Christ loved us and gave himself up for us, a fragrant offering and sacrifice to God. So that's chapter four. The rest of chapter four, seventeen to the end through five, five, one through two. And it talks about the newness of life we have in Christ as well as what the old life looks like. And so we see a lot of that compare and contrast sort of language with Paul in this section. So we are to see what the world is doing, what the Gentiles are doing versus what we are doing in Christ. So the first question on the page. In seventeen, Paul returns to the walk metaphor in chapter two and again in four, one through three. How does Paul describe the walk of the old man? Now again, old man is the term used for our old sinful selves, ourselves before the Holy Spirit comes to us and holy baptism. And so there is the old sinful self, the old man, and then there is the new life in Christ. So the life we have in Christ through the Holy Spirit. So seventeen says, now this I say and testify in the Lord, that you must no longer walk as the Gentiles do in the futility of their minds. So the futility of their minds. I mean, what a phrase, right? I mean, just thinking about futility of their minds, the futility of their thinking. How everything that the old man desires doesn't last. It's, it's like the Ecclesiastes sort of text where everything is being, just a chasing after the wind. It's vanity of vanities. Everything the old man desires is a fruitless pursuit. And is, and the way that you go about it is, is, is just terrible. You know, things we're willing to do to achieve the goals of our futile minds is astonishing, really. And so Paul continues, so in this text, the, our minds, the minds of the old man, the minds of the Gentiles, and so. So the, with the Gentile language, he's not necessarily talking about, you know, Jews and Gentiles here, he's talking about believers and unbelievers. Now, because Paul is coming from that Jewish background and he's talking to the people in Ephesus, the Gentiles are those who are outside, the, the nations. And so that's sort of just a language in which there are the ones who belong to God, the people of God, the kingdom of God, and then there's the nations, those who are outside of that. And so here it's a contrast between those who are in and those who are out. And those who are out live a certain way than those who are in. And the people who are outside live in a darkened understanding. So that's eighteen, they are darkened in their understanding, alienated from the life of God because of the ignorance that is in them due to their hardness of heart. So hardness of heart, a darkness of understanding and ignorance. You know, or sort of the languages, or language used by Paul here to describe those outside the church. So what is, what are some of the, the things here going on? Well, I mean, let's just continue on for a second. Verse nineteen, they have become callous and have given themselves up to sensuality, greedy to practice every kind of impurity. Well, isn't that the world, right? So if you are to describe American culture in a couple of phrases, given themselves up to sensuality, greedy to practice every form of, of every kind of impurity. I mean, that's it, right? The amount of, of sex that is used to not only sell things but to entice. It's in every facet of the media. And not only that, we have violence being portrayed as good, as good, as helpful, as glamorous. I mean, just think about what is glamorous, what is prized, what is best selling. You know, it's sex, violence, it's impurity, anything that can be sort of allowed, there's sort of the idea that everything is allowed. So seventeen through nineteen sort of describe this old way of life and, and we can see it. We can see it in the world around us and. So one of the things, whenever I see these sort of passages, these comparisons, is that we as Christians continue to be shocked when the world behaves this way. And I don't know if it's a particularly American thing or if it's a particularly modern thing, but we as Christians, and I, I think maybe going back to sort of the politics and religion class, we sort of take on this evangelical mindset that we as the church are transforming the world into a more Christian place. But that's not what Paul sort of says here. The church isn't transforming the world into a Christian place, it's just recognizing that it's other and it's separate from, which is more of the Lutheran than evangelical understanding of, of politics and culture in the church. And so, but, but we have this tendency that when we see the world behaving like the world, we're just sort of surprised and shocked. Like it, it's not surprising or shocking to me that the world would allow pornography to be available to basically anyone who can type the word naked into a Google search. It's not surprising to me that there are no restrictions when it comes to all sorts of things. It's not surprising how the world treats abortion. It's not surprising how the world treats the elderly when it comes to euthanasia. It's not a surprise to me how the world views the church and its value to the world. It's no surprise to me when, you know, prayer is kicked out of public school. It's no surprise to me when someone loses their job for proselytizing. It's no surprise to me that Christians are more and more put into a position in which they have to choose between faithfulness and their job. None of that is surprising to me or should be to you if we keep the recognition that the world is something other than the church. So, and this is, I mean, this is sort of the caution, right? So if we are not separate from the world, then what are we? Because if we're not separate from how they live, how they believe, how they act, then what has Christ done? Nothing. If Christ doesn't rescue us out of the pit of darkness, out of our hard-heartedness, out of the malice we so naturally have, then, then he hasn't done anything for our lives. If he's just gonna stand back and say, do whatever you want, be as hateful, be as greedy, be as impure, and I'll just forgive you and wipe it clean when you're dead, that's not scripture. I mean, that, that's the cheapest of cheap grace. And it's certainly not Christ and it's not what we find here in scripture. So there is to be this otherness. And whenever we sort of take on the attributes of the world, we need to step back and consider whether or not we're acting rightly. Because there should be a divide, a visible divide between the church and secular organizations, the Christian and the Gentile or the unbeliever. There should be some sort of difference. There should be a difference between the old and the new. So looking forward then to the second question, how does Paul illustrate this change from old to new? What causes this change? So that's twenty through twenty-four. But that is not the way you learned Christ. See, right there, Christ has taught us a new way, a different way. Assuming that you have heard about him and were taught in him as the truth is in Jesus. I don't, I think there's a little bit of sarcasm there. He's writing the letter to the church whom he has, I mean, he sent the letter he's preached to. Assuming you heard about Jesus, as if they hadn't. Maybe you fell asleep that day. Not like anyone would ever fall asleep during Bible study or church, right? Not looking at anyone particular here. So assuming that you have heard about him and were taught to put off your old self. To put off, to take off. The verb there used is with clothing. So that's the metaphor being used here, it's a metaphor of clothing. Taking off one set of clothes, putting on another set of clothes. Which is kind of funny, because today I didn't feel like putting on my collar and instead I just left a polo on, because you know, it's nice out. And I didn't feel like, you know, dressing up. I don't know, leave a comment if you're disappointed. You won't, I don't care, you don't care. But the metaphor here is clothing and wearing, basically wearing the clothing that Christ has given you. So put off your old self which belongs to your former manner of life and is corrupt through deceitful desires and is renewed in the spirit of your minds. And put on the new self created after the likeness of God in the true righteousness and holiness. So the idea here is that if you were to expand this metaphor, you've got two outfits, two sets of clothing. One goes with one job and one set of traits. The other goes with another job and another set of traits. One is given to you by the world, the other is given to you by Christ. So which one are you to be wearing out into the world? Are you gonna wear your worldly clothes? Again, this is where, yeah, wearing a polo while doing this. Are you gonna wear your worldly clothes out into the world? Or are you gonna wear the clothes that Christ has given you? Are you gonna wear the righteousness of God? Are you going to wear the humility? Are you going to wear the purity? Are you gonna wear the obedience? Or are you going to wear the darkness, the stained, the greedy, the hard-hearted clothing? Which one will it be and which one ought it be? And as Christians, you know the obvious answer. This is kind of what Paul's pointing at, you know what you're supposed to be wearing. You know the outfit that Christ has given you. You know that he has dressed you in righteousness. So what are you doing? What are you doing putting on the old clothing? What are you doing living your life as if Christ has never, as if you've never encountered him? As if you've never heard of him? As if you've never been taught a single word from scripture? What are you doing? So then Paul sets up a contrast. What contrast does Paul set up in twenty-five to thirty-two? Which of these instructions do you find difficult? Well, you don't get to have any input on that, but we'll keep, we'll work through it. So therefore, having put away falsehood, again, that put away is the same sort of taking off and, and putting on sort of idea. You've thrown away that clothing of falsehood. Let each one of you speak the truth with his neighbor; for we are members one of another. Be angry and do not sin. Do not let the sun go down on your anger and give no opportunity to devil. Let the thief no longer steal, but rather let him labor, doing honest work for his, with his own hands so that he may have something to share with anyone in need. Let no corrupting talk come out of your mouths, but only such as is good for building up as it fits the occasion, that it may give grace to those who hear. And do not grieve the Holy Spirit of God by whom you were sealed for the day of redemption. Let all bitterness and wrath and anger and clamor, slander and be away from you. So here, Paul's giving you a list. He's giving you a set of things that set you apart from the world. So if the world's out here and the church is here, this should look differently in what ways? Well, we speak the truth. We speak the truth. That's a tough one. And sometimes the truth is not what the world wants to hear. The world doesn't want to hear God created man and woman. The world doesn't want to hear he created us for marriage between a husband and a wife, that he created us to have children. Those are things God doesn't want to hear. God doesn't want, or the world doesn't want to hear. Yet these are truths. And I, I hear someone who is usually in Bible study asking the question of Pontius Pilate, what is truth? And truth is the things that we know of God through scripture. It is, it is not a lie. And I suppose in some way we can define truth that way. Things that aren't lies. Because we know when we're lying. We know when we're not speaking the truth. We know the feeling that we have when we lie. When we knowingly say something we don't believe or think is true. So the first one, speak truth with your neighbor. You can speak any truth, but you shall speak the truth. The truth of Jesus Christ, the truth of the gospel. For we are members one of another. So here, we're talking about the unity we have in, as the church that are, and I talked about this last week, or, or a few sessions back, the idea of how we live as Christians amongst each other. Not casting pearls before swine sort of idea. Treating each other with respect and humility and, and bearing into one another's burdens. And so this recognition of members one of another, that there's this connectedness that we have. And then there's verse twenty-six, which is just, what do you do with this? Be angry and do not sin. Who pulls that off? That's what I'd like to know. Who is able to be angry and not say something sinful? Not say something hurtful? Not act in such a way that is violent or aggressive? Who can justify, I, there is justified anger. But who among us can be angry without sin except for Christ, right? And I'm angry at a lot of things, angry at a lot of sin, both within myself and in the world. But in that anger, there is no way I would claim to do so without sin. So that, that's a, that's gonna be a hard one. Don't let the sun go down on your anger and give no opportunity to devil. So this, I think here Paul's talking about the connection to anger and bitterness, especially towards one another. The longer you hold on to your anger, the more bitter you become, the more you sever the relationship between yourself and whomever you're angry at. And that bitterness will continue to grow and sprout. I think about, so there's, there's a Veggie Tales with Bob the Tomato and Larry the Cucumber. And there is the Fib from Outer Space. So Larry Boy and the Fib from Outer Space, Junior Asparagus tells a tiny little lie, a fib, and as he has to continue to spread that lie, the fib gets bigger and bigger until it's this giant monster the size of a skyscraper sort of thing, and Larry Boy has to come and save the day. And he's only able to defeat the monster when Junior starts telling the truth. And then the thing shrinks back down and then poof disappears. The same thing happens with anger and bitterness. As our anger continues to manifest and as our bitterness continues to manifest, it becomes bigger and bigger and it sort of develops, not a giant purple monster, but a wall, a wall that separates us from each other. And then of course we have to deal with loneliness and despair and all, all the other sort of things that come through that first anger, then bitterness, then the wall, then the loneliness, the despair, the grief that we feel because we're trapped behind our own wall that we've made for ourselves. And so that's giving the opportunity to the devil. Because when you're behind this wall, self-isolated, in despair, angry and bitter, that's just fertile ground for the devil to work. And then there's this, so in twenty-eight, we start to see this transformation of lifestyle. So it's this, it's a clear refutation against the Jesus loves me just as I am sort of idea. And not, not necessarily directly of that, but you see, I, I don't know, you drive around, you see church signs, Jesus loves you just as you are, you know, great. However, he doesn't want to leave you that way. There's no intention of letting the thief keep on thieving. The prostitute doesn't keep on whoring. The, the adulteress stops adulterating. I don't know if I'm making up words now. But the person who is in sin will stop sinning and will do something fruitful for others. And so we see a little bit of this idea of vocation in twenty-eight, that the thief will no longer steal, but he's gonna labor, doing honest work with his own hands so that he can give to others, so that he can share the fruits of his labor. And so that's kind of the idea of our vocation and our jobs is that when we do things, we're able to, and if we do them honestly, we can share the fruits of our labor with those around us. We can use our skills, our talents, our abilities to help bear the burdens of others, to help share with one another weaknesses and things like that. We don't hide our skills away from others and let them, you know, sort of bear things on their own when we can step in and help. What can a thief give to someone except stolen goods? And then that just makes the other person's situation worse. So instead, the thief should bear, or should work with his own hands and do honest labor so that he, what he does produce can then be given away. Then he talks about the things that come out of our mouths. No corrupting talk, but only such as is good for building up and as fits the occasion, that it may give grace to those who hear. That's, I mean, that's how we speak to one another as Christians. We speak with the grace that we have for one another, building each other up and not tearing down. And if we could accomplish that, we'd be far ahead of the ballgame. And you know, it kind of goes back to that speaking truth. You know, we don't speak harshly. We don't speak without kindness. But we speak with grace and we know the occasion for our words and we build up and not tear down. Then thirty, don't grieve the Holy Spirit. Don't, you know, how do you grieve the Holy Spirit? Well, you turn away from him, you reject his work, you reject his word. You reject the things that he offers, namely the word in the sacrament. You reject gathering together as the people of God around the altar of Christ. So these are ways in which we grieve the Holy Spirit. You were sealed for the day of redemption, where are we sealed? We're sealed in baptism. So rejecting the sort of ideas and the things that flow out of baptism, flow out of the word, flow out of the sacrament. And then finally, let all bitterness and wrath and anger and clamor and slander be put away from you along with all malice. Be kind to one another. Tender-hearted, forgiving one another as God in Christ forgave you. That, I mean, there's the list, right? Let's start there. Let's do these things. Being kind to one another, tender-hearted and forgiving one another as Christ forgave you. If you didn't have a to-do list today, there's three things you can try to accomplish. But we're right back to where we started, aren't we? Back to be angry and don't sin. Do these impossible things. And yes, they are impossible. You're never gonna go a whole day being kind and tender-hearted and forgiving as Christ forgave to all those whom you encountered. Even if you're living by yourself, you're not doing those things to yourself. So if you're never gonna be able to do it, what then is our response? Well, sometimes our response is, well, since I can't, I just won't try. And then since I won't try, I'll just, you know, keep on living in my sinful life. Because I can never live up to what God wants of me. Which is not the right choice, yet it's the choice we often choose. We can't be perfect, God's been perfect for us so we can just keep on being who we are in the world. We'll just keep wearing those old clothes instead of putting on Christ. And so this is, when we're talking about the Christian life, when we're talking about how we live as Christians. You know, we can go back to Luther's Oratio Metatatio Tentatio. We can go back to understand the cycle of, of prayer, of scripture, of living out in the world and cycling back to prayer and word and living out in the world. Luther talks about this, this threefold cycle of our Christian life. That we are, we pray for forgiveness. We receive that forgiveness, we are encouraged by the word and then we go out into the world and we fail. We try, we try to work what we have confessed and what we have read and we go out into the world, we try and we fail and we come back then. Because of our failure, we're driven back to prayer. And then we are received forgiveness, we receive encouragement from the word and we go back out into the world and we try again. And when we fail, we're driven back to prayer. That's what Oratio Metatatio Tentatio means. Is this, that threefold cycle in which we're constantly going out into the world and coming back to God in prayer, going out into the world, coming back to God in prayer. It's the daily remembrance of baptism. When Luther talks about daily remembering our baptism, we remember that we are saved through baptism, that we're forgiven and that we kind of remember that every time we, we wash our face or wash, we can do it when we wash our hands, we're doing that ten times a day. So every time we wash, we can remember that we are made clean in our own baptism. And so Christ continues to do that for us. So those are some ways to think about the Christian life. So even though these, this list seems impossible, they are, there are things to work towards, things to remind us how we ought to be, what is ideal, what should be a Christian life. And then it comes to five, one to two, which this is, this is the summary statement. This is what we ought to be. Therefore, be imitators of God. That's it. That, that's the Christian life. We try to imitate God. We don't try to be God, we don't try to be Jesus, we're never gonna be Jesus. We don't try to be God, we don't try to be Jesus, we're never gonna be Jesus, we're never gonna be God. We can be imitators. Sometimes good imitators, sometimes a poor imitation. But still imitators, that's what we're still striving to be. You know, uh, uh, trying to think of, you know, if, I'm trying to think of a good imitation metaphor here. If, sure, let's, let's go with this. There's the Mona Lisa. There's pictures of the Mona Lisa, which are an imitation of the thing. And then there's the fourth grade art class drawing of the Mona Lisa from a picture that they saw in their art book. Right? There's the pure thing, there's the close to the right thing. And then there's the fourth grade drawing of the thing, which is not a great imitation, but it is a Mona Lisa sort of idea. And then there's the other kid who drew an orange, right? So the kid drawing the orange is not trying to imitate anything except an orange, and that's not really what we're shooting for. Even the kid drawing the Mona Lisa though, is doing an imitation. You know, it might be in crayon and it might be poorly colored, but they tried. If you said it was the Mona Lisa, you look at, okay, sure, I see where you're getting that. This is sort of our life as Christians, as imitators of God. At times, it will look like the fourth grade drawing of the Mona Lisa. Yeah, it, it's kind of like it. But as we continue to get older, as we continue to imitate, as we continue to try, as we continue to learn, as we continue to be encouraged and enlightened by the Holy Spirit, maybe we stop drawing like fourth graders and we graduate to fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, maybe we find we have a talent for some imitations. Maybe we get the face right, but not the body, maybe we get the background, but we start to figure it out. We start to look like what Paul describes in some ways. Someone can look down on our paper and see, ah, you're trying to draw the Mon- Mona Lisa. Ah, you're trying to imitate Christ. Great. Wonderful. You're not trying to imitate the world or draw an orange like Timmy over there. So this is the idea, be imitators of God as beloved children, walk in love as Christ loved us and gave himself up for us, a fragrant offering and sacrifice to God. So how are we imitating? We're imitating with love, the love of Christ, because we're imitating God. And how do we know God? We know God through the love of Christ. So these were the four questions to sort of sum up. The rest of this chapter, uh, we're gonna get to chapter five next. We'll look at three through twenty-one and then we'll kind of jump in then, and so we'll talk about that, which has lots of things to talk about. And then we'll talk about the marriage metaphor, um, the idea of wives submitting to husbands, that'll be two sessions away. Uh, so prepare thyselfs for that one. All right, well, it was great to have you today, it was great to sort of talk through these things, um, you know, mostly to myself. But I, I always appreciate the feedback I get when I run into people uh, at the church or wherever. Uh, so I know uh, some of you are watching and listening and it's nice uh, to know that you're there. And I try to anticipate your questions as best I can, even though I have no idea what your questions might be. So thank you for, for listening and for, uh, and for joining me here today. God bless and enjoy the rest of your week.